Or am I? Have I disconnected for real? Are we live? I think we're good. Am I back? Hello? Hello, everybody? This dream is going to be now known as pre-stake and post-stake. We're okay. I'm in the back. It looks like I'm back. Last bite. Cheers. Are you gonna straight up insult our tea? No, I love the tea in the UK. Milk tea with sugar. Honestly, my body could run off that 24/7. It makes me feel better. I was so focused on Genshin, I didn't notice you crashed. Okay, good. It didn't last too long, so that's good. It was a very quick, like, um, disconnect. Is this the first time you've shown your food on stream besides food streams? Yes. I think it's because I usually don't have a hand cam going show. But today, food got finished and so I was like, I'll just eat on stream. I can slow it down, you know? Take my time eating a little bit. I don't know, I feel like I ate that pretty fast still. That took what, like? Maybe 15 minutes? A hand screen? You can't see my hands? They are hand model hands. Oh, thank you. My nails? My thumbnail is really nice and long. My other nails, not so, not so long. I didn't, I shaped these two. But I didn't take the time to shape my other nails, so... Just my thumbnails. I have long thumbnails because I've been trying to do more Kalimba, so I need the thumbnail for Kalimba. You're nailing it. Oh. Thanks, Tropical.
Zusammen oder getrennt?
Yeah.
So together or separate?
Yeah, together, zusammen, separately, getrennt.
Getrennt.
And normally in Germany, you pay then and there, the servers will have either like a fanny pack of coins or they will go and get the card reader for you.
Yeah.
And you have to tell them the total amount then and there. You don't leave the tip like you do in the US. So if it's like 45 or 42 and you want to just say 50, you could say, "Keep the change"? Is that a thing?
If I get 50, I would just say, "Stimmt so."
Stimmt so. Keep the change. Keep. Uh oh. It's out of ink. Thank you for the stretch show! Oh, that felt really nice on my back. Actually, I didn't stretch this entire time. Thank you, Show. Thank you for the hydrate. I'm gonna hydrate with some wine, unless you want me to hydrate with some water. Delicious. Um, why isn't it working? Okay, there it is. Keep the change. Uh, steamed, steamed so. Steamed so. Hold on, let's hear that one more time.
So. Yeah, meaning this is correct, like, aka, this is the amount you get.
Stimmt so.
Yeah, meaning this is-
If it's like 45 or 42 and you want to just say 50, you could say, "Keep the change"? Is that a thing?
If I get 50, I would just say, "Stimmt so."
Stimmt so.
Steamed show. Stimmt, steamed show. Stim, stim, sh, 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 sh. Oh god, how do I write this? Stimmt so, su. It's almost like shoe. Steamed shoe. Stimmt, sh, steamed shoe, show, show?
Stimmt so.
So. Oh, it's almost like so. Okay. Steamed so. Uh, I got 120,000 points. I can spare some for a stretch. Oh. A stretch is pretty cheap too. It's only 250 treats, so... Have you decided on what the next game redeem is gonna be?
So.
Yeah, meaning this is correct, like, aka, this is the amount you get, like, no change.
This is accurate too. No further discussion.
Or you would say something like, if you give him 100 and you want to make it 50, you say, "Make it 50", so he knows to get your 50 back. So you just say the number and you would say, "Make it 50" or "50 please".
Machen die Fünfzig. Make it 50. Oh, I don't know if I'll ever need this vocabulary, because I'm just gonna use uh, my company credit card when I pay for my meals.
As in, "Fünfzig bitte", you just say the number and then they know, they give you change to 50 euros.
Yeah, so if I give them just a little more and I say, "Stimmt so", that's fine, right?
That's the tip and then-
Done. Transaction fantasy.
Transaction's over.
That was such a new experience for me, dealing with it then and there. I'm so used to leaving the tip on the table or something.
Yeah, it's not anonymous tipping. You have to deal with it right there, right now, and they know exactly how much you're tipping.
Yeah, you need to do the math quickly in your head. Go!
So they do, I guess they do.
Point number five is gonna be manners.
Do not forget your manners when you're speaking another language, or when you're speaking your own language for that matter.
Exactly.
So remember your please and thank yous. If you're just nervous speaking or you try and you always add "bitte", which is please at the end of everything, I think they will appreciate it. Most people that I've spoken to have.
Yeah, that's way more forgiving if you use it. I mean, Germans can see when you struggle with the language and if you add the "bitte", the bitters in the beginning, in the middle, in the end, they just know you're trying and you're being nice.
Trying our hardest.
And thank you would be, "Danke schön", "danke".
"Danke schön" or the short version, which everybody uses most of the time, "danke".
Yeah, and I think for English speakers, "danke" is so much easier because "thank you" is two syllables and "danke" is two syllables too.
But you like to say the long one, which is-
"Danke schön".
"Bitte schön".
These are some of the phrases I-
Yeah, I kind of decided a while ago, but I know Goon has also also has enough for game redeem, so I wanted to wait for them to redeem first, since I already redeemed once and they haven't at all yet. Um, I mean, I don't know, uh, I'll ask if he has "bitte schön", is that a real thing? Um, I don't know if he have plans, because Goon's been busy, I think, so he hasn't come by, but, um, you know, that's very sweet of you, Show, to, to wait. I mean, I don't mind. Um... I'm, I'm slowly, like, it's, it's funny because like, as I finish games, you guys are redeeming games, so I feel like I've got this good rhythm going for like the game redeems and like the, the new games coming in. Apple, hello! Te quiero. Hello, welcome. Good evening, I love you too. How are you? Um, we're learning some German and today I've learned, "Ich heiße Prinzess" "es ist..." Oh god, I already forgot. Oh, "es ist schön, Sie können zu lernen". And also, um, "Kann ich bitte die Karte schieben?" How's the night, you stinker? The night's going well. I, um, just finished dinner. We had a steak dinner on stream and I've also been studying some German, so, you know, you got some bonus, um, mukbang content, you know? I'm close to redeeming another game. Don't worry, it's not Fire Emblem. I can understand why you don't like tactic games. Okay, good. Thank you, Action. Um, usually if I don't like a game, I will stop it within like however long, or if I decide, like 30 minutes, right, is the minimum, I will commit myself to playing a game, because you did spend all of those points, um, and it's so expensive because I do have to, I don't have a huge game library, so most of the things that you guys, uh, suggest to me, I am purchasing with my own money. Um, so we're just, you know, that's how it goes. Uh, it's the game that used to be my game of 2019, Call of Duty: Warzone 2. I was gonna surprise you, but I'll say it. Oh, gotcha, okay. I, um, will look into it. I still have to play Ever's Redeem, which is eastward, and Creed's Redeem, which is Pico Park with friends. Um... Pico Park with Friends is going to be an experience, because I feel like everyone is just gonna be dumb AFs. Um, so we'll see. Tax write-off, boom. I am writing these off, yes. But I also, um, don't know, so this'll be my first year doing Twitch taxes, which is all done, right? Um, I don't, I fortunately made more from Twitch than I spent this year, so I don't think the IRS will ding me for it being like a quote-unquote hobby. Um, but I don't know, after all the write-offs, I don't think I made that much, so hopefully you don't get taxed that much on the Twitch income. "Ich heiße Tropical, ich liebe..." Oh, so in? Wait, I live in? No, I don't know. "Ich liebe ihn..." Gro- yeah, so, oh, I live in. "Ich liebe ihn..." Wo- Sir Britannian? Creed, don't smile at me. Don't Twitch-smile at me, Creed. Have you decided which friends will experience Pico Park with you? Yes, it will be my, um, usual, uh, monkey chat. Um... So I raid with my friends on Final Fantasy XIV and we call ourselves the Butt Monkeys. Um... I don't know why we call ourselves the Butt Monkeys. It just, that's the name that eventually stuck for our group. Um... And so it's a total of eight people, right? So it's me, it's gonna be Ever, it's Miku, you guys have met Miku, um, Creed is going to be a part of it, and then, um, my friend Clayton, which you guys know, Mr. Ravioli, um, Saree, she's been in chat, Esco, um, also been in chat, under Negation, Negation, and then my friend Jihi. So, um, hopefully we play Pico Park and I don't hate everyone after. Because I feel like when you raid with someone, um, I, it, it, you have to put up with a lot and hopefully that will carry us through and our friendship will be stronger after we get through the other side. Taking a break from Genshin. In fact, I'm gonna take a shower now, so see ya, BRB. Okay, Action, have a good shower.
I found very useful for me, even though we don't really go out to eat a lot in restaurants.
Especially now.
Yeah, especially now. They were still applicable at like cafes or something, so they're really helpful to me and I hope they can help someone out there too.
Yeah, I think it's very daily stuff, uh, it's definitely useful, but this is gonna be it for this video today.
Let us know in the comments if you've used any of these phrases or if you know of any different ways to say them. There are a lot of ways you can probably order, but these are just some of the ones that we use most often.
Alright, everybody, stay safe at home. As always, thank you so much for watching and we're gonna see you next time.
How to say no raw onions in German? Honestly, Pico Park gets more chaotic the more people you have, so I'm excited to see this. There is one specific level that everyone agrees is the friendship tester. Can't wait for you guys to get to that level. Oh no. Oh no. Hmm. Raw pork, interesting. Is that a whole bunch of onions? Hmm. How do we, oh, let's, let's watch the 10 must-eat dishes. I actually, let's, uh, this is research, right? We're researching for our trip.
What's up, everybody? We are Dn and Phil and this video is all about German food that you need to eat.
A question that I get often is, "What food should I try when I visit Germany?", so we put together a list of top 10 dishes-
This is the most important. Forget about the sightseeing, it's all about the food.
Sausages.
Sausages.
There are so many delicious sausages in Germany, some in all shapes, sizes, colors, and lengths.
Yeah, so this could be a whole video by itself, so we're just gonna mention a few of the more popular Wiener's. A very famous one is Currywurst, which originated in Berlin post-World War II by using ketchup and curry powder from British soldiers in Germany and making the-
Ketchup and curry powder, how interesting. Uh, Jolly, that's a fun channel. I like watching them every now and then. Oh, interesting, okay. What, Tropical, what are you uing about?
Famous curry ketchup over a grilled pork sausage. It's one of the most popular street foods in Germany and a must-try if you're ever in Berlin.
There is also the Thuringia sausage from the German state.
Theringer? Theringer? Roast bra- wurst? Roast? Bra- wurst? The innuendos, oh, I see. Uh, yes, the, the innuendo of a sausage. I see, I see.
Date Thuringia, and I personally love this one a lot. The minced meat is local from the German state with spices and usually garlic. The oldest known reference to the Thuringia sausage dates back to 1404 and this one is definitely on the smokier side and I really love it.
There is also the famous Weißwurst.
Weißwurst, wurst, Weißwurst. Weißwurst. A white sausage? Oh, with mustard?
If you're in Munich or Bavaria, this is also a must-try. It translates to white sausage and it's a very lighter, area sausage. The traditional version is made with minced veal and pork back bacon and if you order a Weißwurst in Bavaria, it will often be served with sweet mustard and you can eat it with or without its skin.
The next sausage is the Nuremberg Roastbra-
Nuremberg Roast? Bra- wurst? But why is it so white? They said it's made, made out of back bacon pork. I feel like pork in general is a very white meat, um, if it's like been processed a certain way, like, um, if you know Vietnamese, uh, like pork, steamed pork ham roll, whatever, it's called jalo. Like in Vietnamese, you call it jalo, so I feel like that's very white and it's made out of pork, um, and it's processed a certain way, so, um... That's not, I think that's common. This is making me cry. I love sausage. Rot. Wurst. Sorry to make you so hungry so late at night, Tropical.
Thuringa, these sausages are small and very flavorful. They are often served in restaurants with a side of a potato salad or on the streets in a bread roll. The recipe can be dated back to 1300 and a must-try if you're ever in Nuremberg.
There is also the Frankfurter Würstchen, which is very common sausage meant for boiling. This one is-
Frankfurter Würstchen? Frank furter wurst, wurstchen? Wurstin?
More common in at-home meals, um, when we are outside and grilling.
A big stick of meat. This is wife.
You look so happy. Number two, Rouladen.
Rouladen. They're so interesting that German, like, the Rs are sometimes rolled, like Spanish, and other times their Rs are like the French, like, like in the back of your throat, like, rouladen, you know, like in the nose, like throat kind of sound. Basically, a large hot dog.
Rinderhulade means beef roulade and it is a German meat dish where a thin slice of beef is rolled with bacon, onion-
Ooh, that looks so good. Rinderhulade. Mean, yeah. Sorry, just need to hold it down. Lad, okay.
And pickles and then cooked as a roll. It is very good and Germans often have it for bigger or more important holidays or family events.
That looks so good.
And it's a little bit more of a winter dish, though.
Yeah, and there's also the Cold Roulade or cabbage rolls, which are-
Cold Roulade? Cold Roulade?
Are minced meat wrapped in cabbage leaves and baked together. This dish is one of my favorite dishes and I know a lot of cabbage roll style dishes are very popular throughout the world. In Germany, it's more of a savory dish and we've attempted to make this at home several times ourselves. Here we go, here we go.
The moment of truth.
Moment of truth. Are you ready?
Oh, that looks so good.
Wow!
It looks cooked through.
Yeah.
Looks a little dry, but we'll see.
We'll see, it looks amazing.
I love Japanese cabbage rolls with like, uh, like, uh, tomato sauce. Uh, Japanese cabbage rolls are so good. Kicksho goes, "Cabbage rolls are good." Cabbage rolls are so good. Today, after work, I was feeling really hungry. Um, I didn't have a really big lunch, so I made myself like an egg sandwich, which is like, just, you know, two pieces of potato bread and, um, I scrambled two eggs. And I was like, oh, this is missing something. And I don't know why, like, all of a sudden, I thought of, um, the cabbage that I had in my fridge. I had cabbage because of my Boomba way that I made. Uh, it's like, uh, shredded cabbage on top of the noodle soup is really, really good. Um, and I just had like a whole hunk of cabbage left because I didn't cut all of it. And so I shredded some of that cabbage and put it on the scrambled eggs inside the sandwich and I also put some okonomiyaki sauce over that. Oh my god, you guys, it was like the best egg. I'm gonna make another one tomorrow. I think that's gonna be my lunch. I'm still thinking about that egg sandwich. It's so good. I love eggs. Eggs are so perfect.
Schnitzel. Schnitzel is a must-try when visiting Germany. It's just a thin slice of meat that has been tenderized and breaded before frying. For the meat, you can usually choose between pork and chicken, but there's also the more traditional veal variant or trending vegetarian options. The most famous one is probably the Wiener Schnitzel, which is originally from Austria, as Wiener is the German word for Vienna. But Schnitzels are everywhere in Germany and there are other types of Schnitzels, like my favorite, the Jäger Schnitzel. It's like a hunter's or huntsman's schnitzel, which is a schnitzel with mushroom sauce and it's so good.
Mushroom sauce.
Probably the Chicken Schnitzel with Hollandaise sauce.
Schnitzel.
Yum. Oh my gosh, I'm so excited. Oh, excuse me, Mr. Wasps.
Meat is with.
Number-
I'm so excited.
Hollandaise. It's probably the Chick- Meat Hollandaise. I know what meat means now. Hollandaise. Princess, what are you doing to me? I'm sorry, Tropical. I'm doing research for my trip. I have to do this so I know what to order and I know what to get. So I'm not the dumb American at the table saying, "I'd like the hamburger and, uh, you know, some coke, please." Eggs are magical. So sad for people who can't eat them. Wait, are there people who can't eat eggs? Like, what, I mean, egg, I feel like eggs might have a lot of cholesterol, but I've never heard of like an allergy to eggs before.
Chicken Schnitzel with Hollandaise sauce.
Oh yeah.
Yum. Yum. Oh my gosh, I'm so excited. Oh, excuse me, Mr. Wasps, this, the food is not for you.
Mister, she just, she just shooed a wasp. That's so scary. I, when wasps are around, I literally just stay still. I'm so scared of getting stung by a wasp.
Number four, Käsespätzle.
Käsespätzle. Ke- Käses- pätzle. Pätzle. Käse, käse- spätzle.
Käsespätzle is a very popular German dish originating in the south of Germany, but you'll find it throughout Germany in most restaurants.
Käsespätzle.
Hot, small noodle or dumpling things and grated cheese are mushed together and finally decorated with fried onions.
It is one of my favorite dishes when it's a good one. You can say that it's like mac and cheese's cousin, it's not quite the same thing, though, and the fried onions on top are a must.
Oh.
Hmm. Hmm. Dude, I think the best bites are the ones with the, the onions in it, these fried onions. Yeah, yeah, so that's, uh, that salad's for you and that small plate is for you. This is all for me. Before we continue drooling over delicious dishes, we need you to like the video and-
One of my best friends is allergic to eggs and many other things. I know other friends with siblings, relatives who have egg allergies. Oh my god, that sounds so sad. I know my cousin, um, is quite intolerant to things. I know he has a gluten allergy, but my cousin can eat eggs, um, thank goodness for that. Um, some people have an allergy to the egg protein. My cousin couldn't get certain shots because they use the same protein when delivering them. Oh, I see. There are also people who choose not to eat them, like vegans. I would never go, ah. I'm sorry, I know like most vegans go vegan because they want to protect the environment, they love animals and all that jazz, but I'm a weak human, you guys. I don't know, I don't know if I could, um, go vegan. Fishbrötchen. Is that right?
See what else we can eat.
Number five, Fishbrötchen.
Fishbrötchen. Fishbrötchen. Okay. Um, fish- brötchen. Fish sandwich. Fish sandwich.
Fishbrötchen or fish sandwich is a go-to snack especially in the north of Germany. It's a fish sandwich usually served with onions, pickles, some type of sauce like a remoulade or creamy horseradish sauce. Matchas, a type of pairing, is probably the most popular one, but you can find fishbrötchen with salmon, mackerel, cod and other fish as well.
Yeah, when we were in Hamburg, we tried the Nordsee Crabbrötchen, which is made up of tiny, tiny shrimps. It was really, really good.
I don't know if I'll see this, but Nord- seek- crab- and brötchen. That is like the longest word I've ever seen. Literal translation, fish on brioche. Oh, I see. Me too. I went vegan for a week for an assignment and it wasn't bad. I actually kind of enjoyed it, but also it was only for a week and I didn't eat out. If I gave up things like sushi and beefa, I would cry. Yeah, I see, the thing with me is, I love cooking with like bones and, I don't know, I feel like something about the umami from like meat is just so much more substantial than I think the umami you get from certain vegetables. Now, I know there is, um, like, what is it called? It, so Vietnamese vegan food, I really enjoy, uh, they use like mushrooms for the umami, um, and like the fake Viet, like, I don't know, what is it, like, it's the meals you get at the Buddhist temples, because the monks are vegan. Um, like, that vegan food is so good. I think they use like tofu, they might use like vital wheat gluten. I could probably eat that, but after a while, I think I would also get kind of tired of that, you know? Uh, that looks so good. I'll never want to go vegan, never. I'm more of a meat person. I also agree, I mean, I do think, you know, cutting meat consumption would probably help, but at the same time, I'm like, there are way bigger players out there in terms of like the big korpos than like little old me. It's the lie they tell you, you guys. You know? Like consumers as a whole, I don't think like make that much of an impact on the environment. It's really like the big corporations who are just exploiting the earth.
I like it.
But it was freaking expensive. Uh, that one was 10 euros for one fishbrötchen. That's like your once-in-
Am I crazy or does that, doesn't, that doesn't sound that expensive? 10 euros is basically 10 dollars, which is like a meal in Orange County, so... Um, I guess that's, that's basically, I will not be sticker shocked, I think, when I go to Germany. TheGanolukis, hello, welcome in. I hope you're having a good evening. They do actually, yeah, right? Eat the rich, you guys.
Been a lifetime meal right there. Alright, I'm going for the big bite.
Yum. Oh god, oh god, money, money's falling. Money's falling.
If you drop one of these bad boys, it's like, euro down the drain.
A euro down the drain.
Schweins-
Schweinschachse. Shri- hold on, next page. There's a lot of food that I have to write down. Schwa- Schwein- Schweinschaxe. You live in an expensive place. Everything probably sounds less expensive to you. You know, true. When I went to the UK, um, like, so we stopped at St. Mary's Guild Hall, right, in Coventry? And there was a um, the afternoon tea place. And so we were asking around like, oh, what's a good place to go get lunch, you know, around here? And the lady was basically like, well, there's the afternoon place, the afternoon tea place, you know, right across the little um, like courtyard. You could go there, but it is kind of pricey. Um, or you could go, you know, around this area and there's like food for you to eat. So me and my coworker go to the afternoon tea place. We look at the menu and it's like fifteen dollars for lunch, like fifteen pounds for lunch. Uh, maybe twenty. And I look at that and I'm like, like, about the same as in, you know, like my area of Orange County. And I was like, oh, I guess this is considered expensive. And so I was just like, you know, I don't care. I'm gonna expense it to the company cuz this is about average. Um, yeah, I'm excited about all the probably good slash cheap food I'm probably gonna be able to eat while I'm there. I went to Germany pre-euro. What was their currency pre-euro? Was it the franc? Or no, is that France's currency before the euro?
Schweinschaxe is a very iconic dish, especially popular again in the south of Germany, and a common dish, for example, at the Oktoberfest. It's a roasted pork knuckle that is just so good. It has a crispy bacon outside layer and then a soft, fatty, flavorful layer underneath. And then just slow-cooked tender meat that falls right off its bone. It's absolutely delicious. I'm watering.
You're drooling.
Yeah, and I think if you're a fan of barbecue, you have to try that when you're in Germany.
Yeah, it's really good.
Number seven, Metbrötchen.
Hold on. Uh, this is pork knuckle. Pork knuckle. Um, Metbrötchen. Met- Metbrö- Chen. Minced raw pork sandwich. Interesting. Minced raw pork sandwich. Raw pork just sounds wrong to me as an American because in America, pork has a lot of like, uh, I don't even know like what it's called, but it's like bad to eat pork raw in America specifically. I know in other countries that have like better food practices, you're gonna eat things like horse and chicken raw and it's not a problem, but in America, like eating those things raw, it's like, oh. So this might be too adventurous for me.
This next one is Metbrötchen or Hakepeta, and it's raw ground pork or Met that is-
Oh goodness. Um, uh, it was Mark, oh, the Deutschmark? Don't you just love it when you can live off of the company's dime? I do show, I do love it when I can just slide, what is it? Uh, swipe the company credit card. I can only do it like three times a day, right, because I'm expensing three meals a day. Um, but I mean, I don't. And if I'm getting small things, I've already gotten, um, what is it? I've already gotten some euros. Um, cash so that in case of emergency or if I want like personal spending money, I can spend that while I'm, while I'm out there. Yes, hello, baby boy. Yeah, Hermes? Are you gonna miss mommy when I'm gone? Yes, are you gonna miss mommy? I'm mommy gone for a whole week, buddy. Can you sit up on the sofa? Come on, up. Up, come on. Good boy. My stinky baby. I'm so stinky. It's a dead body. It's absolutely disgusting.
Seasoned with salt and pepper and sometimes garlic and other spices. And then it's eaten raw on a bread roll and sometimes served with onions and butter underneath.
Yeah, it's definitely something for the more daring eaters. It's very tasty but very unusual texture as well. I've had it a few times and I believe all of them have been on camera. So I will say if you're going to try this, go to a proper butcher or restaurant with an open mind.
Absolutely.
Number eight, Flammkuchen. Flammkuchen is-
Flammkuchen. Hold on, go back. Flammkuchen. Thin dough with toppings. Is this different from pizza? Flamm- Kuchen. Thin dough. What are you doing? Sit down. Sit down, buddy. Thank you. Thin dough with toppings. I like how my like notes for the language part were, was like, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight pages? And I've already started like four pages of um, food. You probably just offended all the Germans out there. Oh, their version of flatbread. Oh, sorry, not pizza, fat, flat, flatbread.
Flammkuchen. Flammkuchen is a pizza-like dish with a very thin crust, usually served with onions, bacon and a creme fraiche topping. It originates from the Elzass region, which is in the border area between France and Germany, and it has kind of a blended culture of both countries.
Yeah, I love Flammkuchen. It's such a wonderful, light meal for me. There are a lot of variations, some with mushrooms and different cheeses, some are even as a-
Have a good nap, Tropical. Thank you for coming by. Let me give you a little tuck. Good night. Sleep tight. Don't let the bedbugs bite. Thank you for hanging out. I'm sorry for making you so hungry right before bedtime. But I appreciate it. I hope you have a uh, good nap slash sleep. Hello, cowabunga time. How are you? Long time no see. Tropical says he loves you, Hermes. Yes. Tropical says he loves you. That's from Tropical. Okay.
Sweet dessert with like apples, but my favorite is the standard onion and bacon version. I love it.
Looks delicious. How do you say no raw onions? I gotta look that up. Raw onions.
Number nine, Dönerkebab.
Dönerkebab.
Not McDonald's, not Burger King, not Subway or anything else. The Dönerkebab is Germany's most popular fast food. And it is also the best value meal on this list and an absolute must-try if you're ever in Germany. It's a wholly delicious meal that I miss dearly whenever we're not in Germany. So basically, it's a sandwich-style dish with rotisserie meat, usually chicken or veal, and then it's served with some different sauces and veggies like tomatoes, cucumbers, lettuce, white cabbage. And if it's good one, red cabbage as well.
This specific Döner style was created in Berlin by a Turkish restauranteer who combined the rotisserie meat and mixed salad into bread. It has fully become the staple in Germany. There are vegetarian falafel versions as well for those who aren't eight years. He's getting things all over his beard, ladies.
It is so good.
We have it in the UK. I don't think I saw it when I was there, but I might have just not seen it. Eight months, my goodness. It reminds me of shawarma. It kind of reminds me of shawarma too, yeah. Or like, um, I mean, I guess it also like a gyro. I, every, every culture has like a kind of bread with like meat and vegetables, you know? Like Vietnamese people have the um, Bunmi, right? Um, there's the gyro, the Mediterranean, and a Dönerkebab. Hello, Bishop. Welcome in. How are you? Welcome, welcome. I'm so sorry, Time. I don't think there is watch time here. Um, I don't think it works.
It's one of the best I have ever had, seriously, yeah. Number 10, bread and pastries.
Bro- Oh, oh, too fast, too fast. Go back.
I've ever had, seriously, yeah. Number 10.
Brot. Brot. And give back.
Bread and pastries. We cannot forget about German bread and of course other baked goods from German bakeries.
Germany is known for the fresh bread and there are a lot of delicious, different bread types. And there are a ton of bakery items and sweet treats. I love them. My very first trip to Germany, we made a video trying a lot of delicious snacks from the local bakeries. And years later, I'm still finding and trying new pastries and cakes from each city in Germany. Honestly, there are too many to list out, so go and watch one of our other food videos if you're interested. But one of my all-time favorites is a Nusseka, which-
Nusseka, Nusseka. Nusseka.
Translates to nut corner. It's a short crust pastry based topped with some type of jam layer and then roasted nuts on top. Another one is a Franzbrötchen.
Franz bro- Bro- Kenchen. Franz- Brötchen.
It's like a way denser croissant with cinnamon and butter.
Ooh, kind of like a croissant cinnamon roll. Croissant cinnamon roll. This one was a nut nut cake jam thing. Um, everything else I've put a translation for, so that's good. How goes the Polish lessons? Um, it's going good. Um, Ich heiße Prinzess. Uh, Es ist schön, Sie können zu lernen? Guten Abend. Time is enjoying his OLED switch since his switch light broke down. Congrats on getting a new switch. I heard the OLED is very nice because the display is so much brighter and like, uh, I think the colors are more vibrant. Just swallow a pill, I don't think it's going down good. Drink more water, drink more water, it will, it will help you.
Sure, I love it.
Yeah, and for the bread part, my recommendation would be to go to a bakery and choose from any of the darker, heavier, denser options, maybe with or without seeds. The further you go away from the standard white bread, the better. And one of my favorites, though, is the Laugenbrötchen. That's a pretzel style.
Laugenbrötchen. Laugen- Brötchen. Pretzel. Pretzel bread.
Number 11, side dishes.
Pretzel bread roll. That's what I'm doing. Good.
As a bonus, we quickly wanted to mention some sides that are very popular here and will probably come with one of the dishes we've previously mentioned. The first popular side being Knudel or Kluss.
Knudel or Kluss? Knudel, Knudel. Or Kluss? Knudel, Nu- Knu- Knu- Knudel? Kluss?
Which are just boiled dumplings. There are rice and potato-based versions, very commonly served with most meat dishes.
Another one is sauerkraut, which is finely cut fermented cabbage. It's one of the most famous sides and traditionally served warm with some type of pork dish.
Never had it before.
There's also potatoes and potato salad everywhere. There are different variations of potato salad, though. There's a popular debate between mayonnaise-based potato salad and then vinegar-based potato salad.
Oh, interesting.
I personally prefer a vinegar-based potato salad, but a good potato salad is still a good potato salad, you know? Can't compare.
Mayonnaise versus vinegar. I don't think I've ever had a vinegar-based potato salad before. Love soft pretzels. I don't know why, but looking at these foods, I'm jealous of you cuz you're gonna travel now. I may love staying home for Twitch. Foods, I can't deny. Foods? Like, when I travel, I think, I don't care for, um, like, I don't care for things. I don't like, I don't know if you guys can like have learned this about me, but like in, like material goods, I'm not a huge fan of, like, like, when I get things, I am happy, you know, when I get gifts and stuff. But I don't think things are what I spend most of my time and energy like working towards. I love experiences, right? Like going to Death Valley with my friends to see the stars. That was an experience. Um, I, I would also group food under experiences. It's not like something that you can purchase and keep forever. And if you do, you probably shouldn't because food goes bad. Rosca really flexing her Knudel. Hey, it's Mark Wiens on that picture video. Mark Wiens. I know, oh, oh, Mark Wiens. Mark Wiens Restaurant in Bangkok. Oh yes, that is, I guess, um, the famous uh, food vlogger. Um, unless it's Japan, I'm the same when me and my family travel. I always forget to take pictures when I travel. I am trying to get better at that. I am also really bad when it comes to taking pictures. I used to be better when I lived in Japan. Um, and now that I'm seeing like in my Facebook, it's saying like, you know, memories from these um, you know, certain times and places. And I'm like, oh, yeah, I did do that. And like, I took pictures of really inconsequential things, like I took pictures of my dinners that I made at home. Like, not even like going out to eat. And years later, I'm looking at those dishes and I'm like, yeah, I did have a really good time. And you know, I, the, one of the advices, like, one of the pieces of advice that was given to me by someone um, as I was leaving Japan, they were like, just take pictures of your house. You know, your rooms, your kitchen. Take pictures of it because years from now, you're not really gonna remember that well, like what your place looked like. And having those pictures is going to be, you know, a way for you to remember your time and like, cuz I, like, as, as, you know, when you live somewhere, I don't think in your brain, it's something that you find significant enough to like document or record in a photo. Uh, but years later, when you're no longer there, you're so far removed from that place. Something as simple as like, this is the kitchen I used to cook in when I was in Japan, um, is also very like nostalgic, you know? Like to the point where I wish I like had opened my cabinets to take pictures of the cups that I use, like, I don't know what it is. I, I feel like I just get very sentimental about these things. And I lived there for like a good three years, you know, so. Um, I did have a lot of time to, um, really settle in and kind of grow roots. Anyways, um, I feel like, oh, we need to search how to say uh, raw onions in German. Do they, is there a YouTube video? Um, it just says raw pork. Pickled onions. Hmm, what if I just do like a translate? Uh, English to German, raw onions. Ro- how, how, how do you? Rohzwiebeln. Rohe, roe- roe zwieblen. That's important. I'm gonna write that down. Rohe, roe, roe zwieblen. Rohe zwieben. Zwieben? Rohzwiebeln. Zwieben. Ro- roe zwieben. We can do this again. Oh, I'm so glad that you enjoyed it, Action. Yeah. I think, um, I'm pretty much done. I feel like I, oh wait, how do, how do I say where's the restroom? Where is the restroom in German, YouTube? Learn German. How to say where's the restroom? That's important. Herzlich Willkommen. Princess is awesome. Thank you, Time. I think you're awesome too. That's very sweet of you. How to say, where's the bathroom in German? Entschuldigung. Wo ist- Entschuldigung. Entschuldigung. That is such a mouthful. In Schuldigung. Schuldig- Wo ist die Toile- Toilette? Wo ist- Wo ist die toile- toilette? Wo ist die toilette? Ist die Toilette? Die Toilette. Entschuldigung. Entschuldigung. In, in schuldigung. Uh, inside out, hello, welcome in, hello. Guten Aben- guten Abend. Guten Abend. Uh, Deutschgott, oh, Benke, de, gozaruk. I don't think that's correct, by the way. Konnichiwa, oh, hisashi-buri. Hisashi-buri. Yes, I am studying some German. Uh, because I have an upcoming work trip to, um, Germany and I would at least need, I want to learn survival German, you know? Wo ist die Toilette? Wo ist die Toilette? Wo ist die Toilette? Entschuldigung. Entschuld- entschuld- Entschuldigung. 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 Wo Wo finde ich die Toilette? Wo finde ich die Toilette? Oh, there's another one. Um, wo finde ich die Toilette? Only the English speakers would find using the toilet to be a restful room. I, cuz I was talking to my coworker, um, and I was like, I think they don't use the word restroom. And she was like, oh, what about water closet? And I was like, I don't know if they use water closet either cuz I know WC is a UK thing, right? De gozaruk Samurai use, so I'm watching a lot of Samurai video. But I don't know if it's like a venti or I don't know if when you ask a question, it's de gozaruka. Like, I think you have to conjugate that to make it a question. I don't think you can just add a ka to it at the end. I know de gozaruk is, uh, like very Samurai speak. Wo ist die Herren? Wo ist die Herrentoilette? Die, die Herrentoilette? Wo Wo ist die Herrentoilette? Wo ist die Herrentoilette? Which I will never ask for. Wo ist die Damen-Toilette? Wo, wo ist die Damen-Toilette? Oops. I clicked, I clicked the wrong thing. It's like Luffy Seiwanou. I mean, yeah, but also de gozaruk, like, de gozaruk is like the ending of, uh, how you say death. But when you ask a question, I don't think it's de gozaruka. I just wanted to let you know it. That's probably wrong. Wo ist die Damen-Toilette? Wo ist die Damen-Toilette? Wo ist, wo, wo ist die Damen-Toilette? Women's restroom. Good night, Time. Thank you so much. And Shou, thank you for tucking Time in. Good night, sleep tight. Don't let the bed bugs bite. Bye, Time. I hope you have a good night. Thank you so much for stopping by. I really appreciate it. Wo ist die Damen-Toilette? Wo ist die Damen-Toilette? Wo ist die Damen-Toilette? Okay, I don't think we need to know that much. Um, how do you say water in German? Um, interesting. Still water, tap water. That's something that you have to care about when you're in, um, Europe, I guess. Still water versus tap, uh, still water versus, versus sparkling water, sorry. Sparkling water, sprudel wasser. 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 Okay, water. I'm gonna put that on the drinks page. Water. Water is Wasser. Wass- Wasser. 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 Borche ending on the 26th of March. Naruto fans will celebrate. Pain is going to end. All right, I think I got, I think I got everything. Hermes is just like chilling on the couch. Licking the sofa again, even though I told you not to. Yeah, bud. Yeah. Um, okay, I think I got everything. I got how to introduce myself, how to order food at a restaurant, what food to order at a restaurant, how to say no raw onions. Uh, owner, rohe, raha? Rohhe? How do I say? I'll figure out how to say raw onions. Rohenzweibel, zwiebeln. Uh, how to get, ask for water? And how to go to the ba- how to ask for the bathroom? And I think that's everything, really. Um, I feel like that was, we, we, uh, had a successful day today. Um, Borche anime be like, we better end it before it goes below five stars out of 10. Um, all right, let's see here. Who is on right now? I feel like I saw a lot of people. Oops, I s- Um, I think I saw a lot of people on Twitch. Um, so let's take a look. Um, Oh, Hichisun is on Immortal Babe Plus. Oh, he's playing, uh, Abaddon's new, I think, Immortal Babe map. So let's, um, let's watch him. Sev, hello, welcome in. We actually are just finishing up. So I'm so sorry. Hello to you and your partner. Guys, if you would like to join us on the raid and, um, get those 300 channel points, um, please copy this raid message. If you would like to join us and you do not have a subscription, you can copy the second raid message. Um, and we're gonna go over and say hi to Hichisan. He, um, is one of my favorite Jump King streamers. Um, and I would just, you know, want to hang out. It's been a while since I've seen one of his streams, so it's not like they're ending, just taking a break. Uh, more than 75 of the anime is canon, 25% is manga canon. Gotcha. All right, so thank you so much to Lost for the raid. I really, really appreciate it. Um, how do I spell Hichisan's name? Oh, here it is. Um, tomorrow I will be playing some Xenoblade 3, so come, uh, hang out, you know? And if not, I will probably see you guys sometime next week. I will be streaming up until, uh, Thursday. Um, and this week we'll have a collab on another, uh, VTuber's channel, so I won't be streaming on Wednesday. Uh, but I'll be directing you guys there, so please, please come. Um, I think when there are new people, when, and when I collab with people and my viewers come see that person, it makes it much more, you know, of like a legitimate collab and that, um, it will help me open up new opportunities to collab with others, you know? Cuz that means that you guys are receptive. You guys are such a wonderful community who come to support me and support, you know, um, people who I want to be friends with, so please come. Um, Friday, I will be traveling for work and then for the next week after that, I will not be available. But if you guys want, um, you guys can follow me on Twitch, or no, not Twitch, on Twitter. And I will be posting a lot of stuff while I am gone on Twitter. Lots of pictures, probably, probably food pictures. Um, probably stupid venting, like, I hate traveling, flying sucks kind of updates. Um, but yeah. All right, uh, without further ado, let's start this raid over to Hichisan. Lost, thank you again for the raid. I really appreciate you trusting me with your community. Um, if you guys, you know, come by tomorrow, I'll see you then. If not, I'll see you guys all later. Please be happy, please be healthy, but most of all, please be kind. Be kind to others because you never know what a smile hug or hello can do for someone who's having a bad day and be kind to yourselves. Drink water, stretch your legs, get up, walk around every so often, touch some grass, smell the roses directly from the rose bush. I will see you guys all later. I love you, my puppies. Goodbye. Bye, 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 bye. Appreciate you. Love you. Bye.